Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June 25. If you're watching live on Monday, June 25, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions at 769-1677. As always, you can watch us live on the government channel, not yet on PCTV, on the optimum side, right? Am I correct chain? That is, PCTV is currently able to broadcast in its new location up at the pump house on Lake Street through Verizon, but we are in the midst of a project to try to get the optimum service located there. But both are active out of the Village Hall, and so you can watch live or on demand within a few days and catch up with what happened. A couple of announcements. Our next meeting is two weeks from today, Monday, July 9, at 8:00 PM with a work session at 7:00. Couple of announcements to make. First is a very, very nice event yesterday honoring the Pleasantville High School lacrosse team. Miraculously, the second team this school year to win the state championship. The football team won the state championship in the fall. Lacrosse team won the state championship in their division in the spring. We had planned a parade similar to the one that was had for the football team, and the weather looked extremely questionable. And of course, it turned out that it would have been okay in that one little time slot. But a nice event at the high school auditorium, and really quite a remarkable result for Pleasantville Panther teams this year. Congratulations to all those people who were involved. Also wanted to mention that some of you may have seen a couple of items on our agenda over the last several weeks regarding the small parking lot that is on the side street opposite what used to be Pizza Hut and is now Southern Table. There was an 18-car parking space there that was owned by Pizza Hut. It was not sold as part of the project when the Pizza Hut building was demolished and a new building was built. And I am happy to report that we were successful in negotiating a deal with Pizza Hut and closed on the property last week. And so we now have 18 new parking spaces that are already built out. Jeff Condon and our crew at DPW are working on it the last several days, and we intend to open it again. At least preliminarily, we'll use those 18 spaces as permit spaces restricted to permit holders up until 3:00 PM. And then, just like all the rest of our permit lots, they will be available for free for anyone after 3:00 on weekdays and all day on weekends. So a nice modest addition to our parking supply, already built out. Happy news. Anybody else have announcements to make? Okay. So the first item on our agenda is a...the village has many, many, many times benefited from the work of Eagle Scouts, sometimes projects specifically involved in the village, and sometimes projects that involve the school or churches or some other activity. This year, a young man named Will Promisell who was here with us tonight came up with a really great idea. And not only was it a really great idea, but he delivered in spades in raising money to assist in supporting it and also engaging the village and the folks at Dad's Club in Aso. So Will, if you'd be willing to come on up to the mic and just give us a quick overview of what your project was.
Hi. Sorry. There we go. Hi, my name is Will Promisell of Tripleville Pleasantville. Thank you very much for your consideration. My project is that I'm adding three AEDs to one of each parks of the athletic fields, so Souchers and Sellers Parkway and Roselle. Project's almost done. We're just confirming some security stuff with the police department, and we should have it finished by the end of the summer, or maybe even before that.
So it's really quite a remarkable thing to have defibrillators in little gizmos that are actually heated in the winter. Who knew, right? And how did you raise the money? I know the answer to that, but I'll toss that your way.
We raised it through a pasta dinner at the Presbyterian Church. We...our estimated goal was $1,000, but we raised over like double that. We raised $2,400. So it just shows that people really care about it.
Well, I just want to say on behalf of the entire Village Board, and it is a really great project. You brought to our attention something that probably was lurking around in the backgrounds of our minds and really should have been acted on sooner. And it was Will Promisell that kicked it into the front burner. And the result is we'll have these new AEDs at each of these three fields, and folks will be safer. We very much hope we never use them. So I just want to say on behalf of the Village Board, thank you, Will Promisell, not only for your good spirit, your good thinking, your planning, but that was a fun night at the pasta dinner.
Thank you very much.
I would say without hesitation, I've been to a lot of pasta dinners, and it was the best one yet.
Saying something.
I mean, without hesitation. So.
Thank you very much.
I thank you for that.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you.
So we have a bunch of things that will take a while tonight, but we're going to jump ahead to resolution number 154, which is the appointment of a motor equipment operator. He happens to be here tonight and ought to have the opportunity to see the board hire him without having to listen to all the rest of it. So Nicole, 154.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Public Works, hereby appoints Stephen Hoche to the job title Motor Equipment Operator. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Oh, Hope.
Hope, I'm sorry. MEO, job code 0427, CSEA Wage Schedule B, MEO Step 1, effective July 9, 2018, at a salary of $60,916. Said appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a maximum of 52 weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, sir. Glad to have you on the stage. And we really did you a favor because this is going to go on for a while.
That's true.
Okay. Just to report, we had email correspondence from a neighbor, Sal Nicosia, down on William Street. Have you taken a look at that?
Yeah.
To grapple with it?
Yep.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the presentation by David Mann on Depew Street Residential. I dare say that starting speaker is David Steinmetz. Welcome.
Why do you dare say that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, because you got up. That's what I thought. That was a pretty clear invitation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees. David Steinmetz from the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz. Pleased to be back before your board. It has been a while, and very excited to be here on behalf of David Mann and the Lighthouse Living. We are here, I think your board knows, with regard to 52 Depew and One Vanderbilt, the commonly referred to as the Laduka Auto and the adjacent commercial space. With me this evening, my client, David Mann, my partner, David Cooper, and the architect, Phil Fruchter. We just call him David just to make it easier on the...so you can call all of us David. Phil is with PAP Architects. David Mann only typically hires people with the first name David. It makes it...we are here with a proposal for a residential reuse and redevelopment of that site. That site, obviously, is, as you, I think, all know, zoned A1. It is slightly over one acre. David and his entity are contract vendee and in contract to purchase both parcels.
The parts are being the Laduka parcel and the...
And the...what's referred to as One Vanderbilt, the office...
The warehouse office at the corner of Depew, then.
Correct. Exactly. And the combined properties are slightly over 45,000 square feet. For those of you who may not know David, David is actually becoming a fairly well-known developer here in our county. He's got a number of rather successful projects in White Plains, in Harrison, in Portchester, also over in Hackensack, and is working on a project in Westport, Connecticut. He has found a way to develop sites that are targeted to sections of the marketplace. His concept is rental. His concept is to rent in thriving communities. And as I think he explained to some of us in an informal meeting, he looks for areas that have successful, thriving restaurants and nightlife, and that's where people want to be, and that's where people want to live. In today's day and age, we are now seeing as land use practitioners, far more walkability and transit-oriented development is being kind of the underpinning of the marketplace. There are a lot more people now that are thinking about where they want to live proximate to what they can walk to compared to years ago, where it was absolutely unequivocally, how big a yard, and can I have a fence? So...Phil, what do I want to put up here as a first? So we're presenting you tonight with two different schemes. The site is zoned A1. We have the capability of putting residential units on that property, three stories in height. We can meet the village's parking requirements, and we can do something that we think will hit the market. We'll deal with the site and clean up the site and repurpose the site, and we think it will be a wonderful attribute to the Village of Pleasantville. We also think that there are ways to develop the site that will yield benefits to the village above and beyond just a nice place for folks to live, but also to create some additional parking here for your village. So we're presenting you with two different concepts. The first concept, which is clearly our preferred layout, is...thank you.
So the plan is after David shows it to us, we'll put it on this other easel so everybody in the audience can see.
Shane has already given us our instructions, and we will comply. The first concept is for 73 rental apartments, a variety of 11 studios, one bedrooms, 49 one-bedrooms, I think 13 two-bedrooms, 4,500 square feet of office or commercial space, which can be utilized in conjunction with the building. And Phil will walk us through that in a moment. And 149 parking spaces associated with the building, some of which would be underground. Now, under your zoning, the zoning requires 123 parking spaces for a building like this. We believe that we can generate 149 spaces, and under...if you examine your zoning ordinance, your zoning ordinance takes into account the concept of shared parking. Shared parking, common vernacular in land use, if you have more than one use on a piece of property, i.e., some commercial, 4,500 square feet of commercial, some residential, they have different peaks, they have different needs. There are plenty of folks who will only come to the site during working hours and will need those parking spaces from 8:00 or 9:00 until 5:00 or 6:00. And that's the flip side of those folks who actually might drive their car out and commute elsewhere in the county. We are allowed to have somewhere around 15 of those parking spaces would be shared parking. So of the 123, we actually think we could take our parking down to 108 is really what would be needed on that site. With 108 parking spaces, we would have 41 excess parking spaces. So without shared parking, we can generate 26 parking spaces in excess of zoning requirements. With shared parking, we can generate 41 parking spaces. So somewhere between 26 and 41 additional parking spaces can be generated, along with a 73-unit rental project with lovely amenities, a rooftop assembly or outdoor area, inside some amenities that will be described within the building. This can only be done, however, if David engages in additional excavation and work on site to create those parking spaces. So our concept is to present to you 73 rental units, along with the possibility of generating additional parking for the village. And in conjunction with that, we would ask the village to entertain some type of payment in lieu of taxes concept that we're going to describe in greater detail. David Cooper's going to help walk us through that. I want you to know, I represent a lot of developers throughout the county. A lot of developers, it's penciled in to request some kind of tax relief just because. It's built into their pro forma. David Mann has never asked for a pilot agreement on any of his other projects. David Mann has never secured a pilot agreement on any of his other projects. We're doing it creatively here because we actually think at greater cost to our development team, we can yield a benefit to the village. So that's the preferred concept. The secondary concept...same layout, reduced number of units. We can do a 60-apartment layout, also three stories. Phil could explain how we would trim some of the building, still have 4,500 square feet of office space. We would have 88 parking spaces without any underground parking. 103 parking spaces would be required under zoning. But again, if we utilize the shared parking concept, we can build 88 parking spaces, and we think the site would work. It would not result in any additional parking to the village. It would still be a lovely addition to the village. It would still be a functional and, we think, an appreciated new rental project, but it would be lacking that additional component of providing a benefit to the village that we think would be useful. So we wanted to open the dialogue tonight about the project. We have not filed anything. Again, both of these projects, both of these layouts are as-of-right. These are as-of-right, these are as-of-right projects. And in some respects, we actually think they're as-of-right with a bit of a conservative bent on your parking. Though David did not participate in the recent zone changes that came along with the A1 zone, what I think you can learn from David and our development team as we go through the process, we think your parking ratio here in Pleasantville remains on the high side. Understand, we're delighted that the village engaged in some comprehensive plan adjustments. We're delighted that the village adopted some zone changes. I'm pleased, as the mayor knows, I'm one of the first people that came knocking on the mayor's door several years ago with regard to one of these properties that started the process. So I'm excited to come in at the back end now and see that the village is being forward-thinking, is thinking about TOD. You have a wonderful, a wonderful vibrant village, and there are a lot of people, I think, who would love to live close to it and be able to walk through it and get to the train station. This project will allow that to happen. Phil, maybe you'd help me just do a little bit more justice to your design and your concept, and then we can talk more about the details.
So can we put that back on this easel so folks can see it? Can we put it on this easel so folks who haven't seen it can see it?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. I'm Philip Fruchter, PAP Architects PC. Just to give a little...I know everybody is familiar with this location, but for those who may not be aware, this is the site over here. It is bordered by the Sawmill River Parkway, the Metro North Railroad tracks, and Depew is running right over here, Vanderbilt coming down this direction. One Vanderbilt building is here, the view from the Sawmill, the Laduka Auto Service area, and then the curb cut entering the site from Depew. As Mr. Steinmetz indicated, our concept is...I'll take that one back, David. Metro North, Depew, Sawmill. To have a building tucked into the hill, the Depew slopes down from the corner of Vanderbilt all the way down to the entrance exit Sawmill, and is lower by over a story on this side, higher on this side, and then slopes down. The idea is that all of the parking would be hidden and buried from Depew and Vanderbilt under the building, and we would enter the site with vehicles from a curb cut on Depew going underneath the building.
So that's roughly the same curb cut to go to Laduka today?
Correct. Off by a few feet, but essentially the same. And then be able to have parking under the building and actually exit the building for some surface parking in this area. And different schemes, which I'll show you in a minute, depending upon whether it's the 73 or 60-unit development. Also, the area over here, which is presently paved and has the service buildings on it, now becomes an opportunity for greenery, extensive landscaping, which presently does not exist.
Is the property line go all the way to Grand Street, or is that state property?
Grand Street.
That's on the lower...
This is county property right here.
So the end of your red building is essentially the end of the property?
Approximately there.
Okay.
We do, however...
We believe that we would be able to secure permission to landscape in this area. That is something that we would plan on doing, both with the state and the county.
Okay. That was one of my questions, was how much Sawmill plays a role in this. And then can you just show on there while we're pointing at it where the current Laduka garage ends?
I will go back to that one, but it's generally this area.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So in the first scheme with the additional parking, and this is the 73-unit scheme, Vanderbilt is here, Depew there, railroad tracks here. We have 4,500 square feet of commercial office space on Depew. The lobby to the multifamily building is in blue here. The idea is we have a strong connection to the downtown village. Pedestrians can walk easily straight across Depew and visit restaurants and other shops. And then as the...and then the commercial space is on grade on Depew, and then as things start sloping down, we have the parking and the multifamily section, multifamily in the rear, and...
Is the building at consistent height everywhere, or is it stacked?
The building is a consistent height, yes.
And this retail and proposed vestibule is on the top floor?
No. It is on a middle level, the first floor of the dwelling units above the parking. But it...and it is on grade with the existing sidewalk at the intersection of Vanderbilt and Depew.
So there's another floor above that?
Correct. And I'll show you an elevation in a minute.
And no determination necessarily that it would be retail, per se?
As we move up the building, we have typical floors of dwelling units. We have, because the building steps back, the grade steps back towards the Sawmill, we have dwelling units facing out the rear where the front is actually buried. So we have amenity space and utilities buried into the side of the hill. And then as Depew goes downhill, dwelling units then emerge above grade on the same level. And we have two levels of parking here. One of the levels is pretty much completely below grade. In the alternate scheme, well... this is an elevation from Vanderbilt and Depew. The lobby is right here. The commercial space is there. Then we have one level of dwelling units above that. And as the site steps down, another level of dwelling units emerges as Depew goes down the hill. And this is the entrance into the parking. This is a canopy over the amenity roof deck on a portion of the roof. And the concept at the moment for the exterior cladding of the building is primarily a terracotta shingle. The blue is glass, but for the most part, a natural clay material used in an innovative way. When we go to the 60-unit scheme...
Phil, can you put that one back on the easel so the folks in the audience can see?
All right. That's looking due north. That was...
No, west-ish. That's the view from Vanderbilt.
It's a view towards Sawmill.
Towards Sawmill. Well, towards the...you're looking towards Pleasantville, that true north end.
And that view is not going to change in any substantial way in either of the schemes. It's a little bit tighter, but essentially that remains the same.
Phil, just so anybody that's watching home is clear, angle of that view, that view is from where?
That is from Depew looking towards the Sawmill. So you can see Depew going down the hill. You can see the opportunity for additional landscaping between the sidewalk of Depew and the building where we've proposed considerable planting of evergreens. In the 60-unit scheme, we have the same 4,500 square feet of commercial space, the same lobby exiting out onto Vanderbilt. And we have curb cut off of Depew, actually two curb cuts in this instance. And here, the parking, we have one less level of parking, and the dwelling units are more compact.
Meaning smaller?
More compact in terms of the floor plate.
So is the...are the dwellings different in square footage, or they're just...
No, they are the same square footage, just fewer of them. So here you can see previous...in the previous scheme, we had parking in this area. This now is unexcavated. We just have a little bit of parking on this level that's above grade where the...on the Sawmill level, and then some surface parking over here, and then one level of parking access through this curb cut. And then this is the typical dwelling unit floor plate. And as David said in the various schemes, in the 60-unit scheme, there are 10 studios, 41 bedroom and 10 two-bedroom. And in the 73-unit scheme, there are 11 studios, 49 one-bedroom and 13 two-bedroom units.
How do you...how did you arrive at those proportions?
In terms of the distribution of units?
Yeah, in terms of size of units.
The size of the units or the allocation?
Well, the studio, one bedroom, two bedroom.
So I...David's got a fair amount of experience in terms of what has done well in the market. And basically, that he's trying to follow the same formula to ensure the...clearly the overwhelming majority of the units are ones. That's a lot of what's out there right now, our folks. He has found young couples just starting out, have been moving into his buildings. He has also found that there are couples who are getting out of their homes and trying to downsize, and they too are moving in. And I think...
Ignore me.
No, no problem.
Pay no attention to the man, buddy.
Terrific. Thank you.
So couples who are moving out of homes?
I just don't like...
Oh, yeah, no, I can't see.
It's just so rude to not be able to see some of that.
All right. Well, we can take it back.
No, it's okay.
I didn't want to...I didn't want to get this...thank you.
Whoops.
See, I shouldn't have gone there.
And as David has explained to those officials at the village with whom he has previously met, there are also...
Nicole, why don't you just sit in GOC today?
We're fine. I think we're good now.
Okay.
I'm good, but thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I could see you while we were speaking. He's also got some folks who are divorcees or are single and looking for an attractive place... attractive place to rent. So the distribution of units is basically something that has worked. There's, nothing is set in stone. Let's be clear, no application has yet been filed with your village. We really wanted to come here tonight as the commencement of that process. And, and clearly, you know, nobody's hiding anything. There's a desire to do the seventy-three unit building. There is a desire to fit well into Pleasantville and there's a desire to generate parking. Well before we decided we wanted to do this, David had conferred with our team, David met with the former village manager, Patty Dwyer, and talked about the site, his interest in the site. And it was, it was made abundantly clear to him and to us that yielding some additional parking would be something that, that could be attractive to the village under a variety of scenarios. Having said that, we're also very mindful of coming before any municipality and talking about the possibility of some form of tax relief. As a result, before we did anything, we went and met with your, we contacted your school board, your school district, and we conducted a meeting several weeks ago. And I'm going to turn it over to my partner, David Cooper, who's going to explain a little bit about the, I guess, the education that he went through in terms of understanding the interplay of the tax levy, the state tax cap, the goals and objectives of the school district and, and explain to you how we think this can work without yielding any kind of negative impact to the school district and the surrounding community.
Do we have time for a couple more questions?
We have time for as many questions as you've got.
So when you, understanding this would take some time to build, when you did the economic modeling for this, what rental rates were you assuming for the units?
Rental rates, you're talking about prices?
Retail rental, yeah.
David?
Just to get an idea.
Range? Do you want to just?
I guess studios were around nineteen hundred, two thousand, one bedrooms, anyone from twenty-three hundred to twenty-seven hundred. I was going to say earlier, not every one bedroom is considered people. Some are, they range from six hundred to nine hundred square feet. The ones that are like closer to nine hundred have like an alcove, like they're all just like dead. So, you know, they're not all peak, we know there's four, you're forty-nine, they're not all exact.
It's not cookie cutter units?
Sure, of course.
So, so just so that everybody heard that the studios start around nineteen hundred, two thousand. The one bedrooms go from twenty-three to twenty-seven and the twos would be north of the twenty-seven.
Yeah, and second question, there's sometimes confusion within village residents about what our role is in something like this. So just to clarify, this would be within code. What, what you're here to discuss is actually whether you could obtain some, some tax relief in.
That's correct.
In return for parking. Just so that people who are watching know that this is not our decision necessarily to say this building can be here or not be here, correct? Or am I wrong?
In, in fact, you've already said that. So, so let's be clear.
In zoning, that's existed for many years.
Right. You, you've zoned the site for, for something like this and, and we now have somebody who's availing himself of your zoning.
Right.
And would like to see the site cleaned, repurposed and, and put to productive use. You should know, I'm, I don't think I have to tell you, the public should know, this site currently owes somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars in outstanding taxes. That would get cleared up. This site would now become productive on the tax rolls even with some form of initial relief. And that's really what we're, what we're talking about. I have preliminarily discussed this with the chairman of the town IDA. They would likely be involved. But I, we wanted to make sure your board and the community at large knew, we reached out to the school district as well. We, we understand that that's important.
I just want people to understand that when these things come before us, if they're as of right, that means they're within existing zoning so that they can, if they're building within existing zoning regulations, they have the right to build the building, am I right, Robert?
Correct.
Yeah.
It'll all get reviewed or go through.
So there's a specific, there's a specific question there here for us to talk about.
And I, just one more quick thing, I'm sure the remediation issue's been looked at?
So, great question, trustee Lord, absolutely been looked at and we're very pleased to announce to your board and the community, the site has been accepted into the New York State Brownfields Cleanup Program. That is a good thing for your village. Your, your village has had a site sitting here at its entryway that is in need of cleanup. And David has, has worked quite hard with his consultants and with the state to get the site admitted into that program. And that program will now be, assuming he closes and proceeds with this, that program would now be administered and the site would be cleaned up to required levels.
So this is, sorry.
Go ahead.
This is, so this is essentially oil, other things related to cars that was improperly disposed of?
The good news is, the good news is it is just oil-related things. It's just, you know, for, for folks that aren't completely familiar with the vernacular, it's hydrocarbons, it's fuel-related things, it's nothing beyond that. And that's important.
Yeah. And does the cleanup of it require removal of a significant amount of cubic yards of earth?
Requires certainly a removal of, of a fair amount. Mr. Mayor, what we define as significant, David will probably tell you it's more than significant and others may say not, but there's, there's a fair amount of work that he's going to have to do to bring that site up to, up to standards.
So having nothing whatsoever to do with this project and anyone's view of it, I will say although residential has been permitted there in the A1 district for all these many years, I dare say that the drafters of that code didn't envision that a site right on the sawmill would be an attractive site. But in today's world, clearly it is because we have a successful developer who wants to do it.
So the interesting thing is we, we've talked about that as a team. And that's an important question for your board and ultimately for your planning commission to examine.
Right.
Does this make sense? That's what the zoning says, does this make sense? David has successfully developed, marketed and fully rented and absorbed sites that are on, immediately on Interstate Route 287, on Metro North rail lines, just like this where there's a rail line immediately behind it. So he's got experience with dealing with sites that, that are in trafficked areas, working with appropriate building materials that deal with that. And this was not an unappealing site as a result of that.
I have a question about shared parking. By shared parking, are you referring to the idea that these spaces would be used for people coming to the commercial spaces?
Correct.
Places during the day and then they would be available to people in the village after business hours and on the weekends? Is that the?
No.
No.
So, so I'm glad you asked the question.
You could clarify what that means.
So your planning, this, this is something we deal with, with your planning commission level and with your planning consultants with some frequency.
Okay.
One can have a, a parking space and it can be my parking space for my unit, but I leave every morning at seven-thirty to get to work and I don't get home until six-thirty or seven o'clock in the evening. That space is sitting vacant. So what forward-thinking zoning, and thankfully your village has this, what forward-thinking zoning bakes into the code is the concept of sharing parking spaces, allowing uses that have different or not competing peak hours to share the parking space. You only allow up to twenty-five percent of the parking on the site to be shared. That's kind of a conventional or a fairly customary concept and you allow up to that number of spaces. So in this situation, we look at the amount of commercial space we've got and who might be using it. And we will be working, should, should this proceed, we would be working with your planning commission to explain with our traffic consultant and your village consultants why we think the numbers that we've laid out would work without having an adverse impact on parking. We don't want to have people come home and not be able to get to their parking space. So what your code actually says is every, you, you, you must have at least one parking space for every single rental unit. None of those can be baked into the shared parking number. It would be the excess number of parking spaces for the units that would be allowed to possibly be used as shared parking.
We're in the process, I mean, I guess part of our decision has to do with the difference in a number of extra cars that'd be potentially coming in as well. That, that exit, I assume is going to be onto, onto the sawmill right there from Depew, from Grand Street, is that right?
Correct. Would empty back out onto Grand Street, yes.
Yeah, because that, that, that is traditionally a pretty well-used little strip of land at rush hour. Have you guys looked at how this will impact that?
So obviously, the, the answer to that is none of the secret process has commenced. So under, so for the benefit of the record and the, the community, as I think you all know, we have to go through the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act or the secret process. Part of the secret process will be an in-depth traffic study analyzing not only the number of vehicles, but the temporal distribution of the hours that these vehicles would come and go.
Right.
So we will be looking at that. The early analysis that has been done indicates that this will work.
Okay.
And that it will work at that intersection, but we will obviously, to, to me it's obvious, we know we will have to prove that out to your planning commission and your consultants.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is just spend a couple of minutes to get into, because we are really here to talk about this kind of novel concept for you in terms of a, a pilot agreement. I would like David Cooper to just explain what we did with your school board and, and go through some of those numbers.
Thank you, David. The third David tonight. Good evening, Mr. Mayor members, the board. My name is David Cooper for all.
I'm David on this.
And another David, so. I, let me, let me just back up quickly and give you the, the numbers in general, how it affects the village and then, and take you through how the pilot would, would work, how we're proposing it to work and then our discussions with the school board. The procedurally, the way it would work is the, the town IDA would ultimately be the, the agency that's responsible for, for the, for the pilot. However, we're informed and it makes sense that they're going to defer to the taxing jurisdictions, the school board and the village before they would, they would weigh in or make it, make a determination. So first, we, we met with, with a committee of, of the, the school board, the school district to weigh their interest and now we're here tonight to, to discuss it and weigh your interest as well. We do see this as a unique opportunity, not something that's going to sort of open a proverbial can of worms. One, because of the location of the property and, and the, and the ability of the village to really reactivate a property that can have residential, but obviously is, is in a location that has been struggling for a while. And also in conjunction with your sort of, not revitalization, but continued revitalization, I would say, of the downtown area and the need for, for parking. It really is one of those unique opportunities for the village and that's why we believe it is appropriate. Let me, the, the current tax status of fifty-two Depew Street, thirty-six thousand, thirty-six thousand dollars or so and change is levied by the town, by the village per year at the site. Excuse me, is, is levied in total at the site. Seven thousand dollars of that goes to the village each year. Currently, as, as David referred to, their, that, that property's already in arrears since about two thousand and ten. It's actually to about three hundred thousand, a little over three hundred thousand dollars in, in arrears. But had taxes been paid, it would be about seven thousand dollars per year to the village. The tax status of one Vanderbilt, not in, in, in any arrears, but the total levy is about twenty-four thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars of it would, would go to, goes to the village. So in total, right now, the village is generating or would be generating about thirteen thousand dollars or so a, a year annually in, in taxes from levying those two properties. The, the assumption is, is that on the, the, the tax liability on the redeveloped and merged parcel, using the, the scheme with the, the additional, the larger amount of units with, with the pilot and also the, the parking, would generate approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. It would be levied at about three hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's obviously general, general numbers.
All in.
All in.
What was the all-in number in the current setup?
Uh.
You gave us the individual, but.
Current all-in?
Sixty.
Sixty-four.
Sixty?
Sixty-four thousand.
Okay.
Right, for both, for, for both properties together. Obviously that three hundred fifty thousand dollars is, is an, an estimate, it's going to be dependent upon.
Understood.
Et cetera. The proposal would be for its ten-year tax abatement on, on a payment schedule about seventy, starting at about a seventy percent discount, but then increasing each year.
And you propose that discount to be on the total three hundred fifty thousand?
Yes, yes, so it would, so it would affect.
That is all the taxing jurisdictions in this proposal would participate in?
Correct.
Is it starting at what percent?
A seventy percent discount. So, so the first payment total all-in would be a hundred and five thousand dollars. That would be about twenty-one thousand dollars to the village. So it's, it would still be significantly more than what, what the village is currently obtaining from these two, from these two properties. That number would increase each year until after the, until the, in the eleventh year, it would be placed back onto, onto the tax rolls and at its full assessed value. We met with a committee of the school board in, in May for the purposes of, of discuss, the same discussion entertaining their interests and see where, where they would be with respect to their, their numbers. Their numbers are, are a lot higher, both in terms of the, the assessed value and also about, and, and the actual levy. I don't have to get through, go, go through all the numbers, but one of the issues that was brought up to us is how it would affect the tax cap levy for, for the school district. This seems to be a, I don't want to say a unique issue, but a unique, an issue that is primary on, on the school district's level because the pilot would be excluded out of the, of the tax levy in your calculation, you know, each year. And David, David Steinman's reference to my study over the last couple of months into, into this calculation, he's right, it was a lot of study. There's, there's a very complicated formula that's used, but part of that formula is a pilot amount is subtracted out of the tax levy, bill, or tax levy calculation. So it would impact in the first year because you're going from zero to, to a certain amount. It would then equalize going, going forward. The other thing is, is that the income that would be generated from the pilot still can be used in, in budgeting. So it's not as if the, the revenue isn't lost. The revenue still goes to, the school, school district still goes to, to the village, it just can't be included in the tax levy. The other concern that, that, that came up was schoolchildren. And, and David Mann took, referred to before, David Steinman did as well, and certainly David Mann could, could take you through his experience, but the, the rental units and the, and the, this type of project, we believe are not going to generate the, the, a significant amount of schoolchildren. One, if you look at the, the type of units, most of them are one-bedroom and it's studios, but also because it's, it's a rental population, you're not looking at, at long-term investment, you're looking at typically people that, that don't, that are sort of not in it for the long haul and looking for, for other, thinking of transition. And so don't come with the, with schoolchildren. You may have younger children, but not in, in the school, in a school age population. The way we left off with the school district, and, and this was, I should say, I keep saying the school district, although it was, it was a committee of, of the school board, it was the superintendent, super, assistant superintendent as well, a, a couple of, of members of the public as well. They, they have a, a new committee on, on development in general in, in the school district. It was a very productive, productive meeting, it was their first meeting in general, but it was sort of a good project to, to kick them off on. The way we left it with them was, we thought it would, it would first be appropriate for us, one, to meet with, with your board and then of course with an application with, with the planning board and, and start discussing the actual project itself before coming back to the school board. Obviously any school board meeting would be public. We thought it would be inappropriate to start having public meetings with the school board before even coming to your board. So those, those two issues with, in terms of the tax levy as well as schoolchildren, of course, we'll, we'll continue the conversation, but first one, we wanted to speak with you tonight as well.
So, in the proposition you present to us, it's a staged tax abatement in exchange for parking?
Correct. Correct.
What's in it for the school district? Why would they participate in that? I mean, if I were sitting in their shoes, I would say it presents some potential risk and not much benefit.
Well, I think a number one benefit is, is you're reactivating this property that, that currently is, one, half of it at least is not producing any.
I get that, but just to be clear, if all of us say no tax abatement, no nothing, you're going to do it, right? That's the plan? Or potentially, you don't have to answer this if you don't want to, does the project hinge on some sort of a tax abatement or does it not?
Well, the, the greater density and the more valuable development for the taxing jurisdictions viewpoint is dependent upon that.
I get it, but, but the smaller, whatever it was, sixty units?
Sixty-three.
Is, you would go ahead with that? The implication is you would go ahead with that with no deal of any other kind.
It, it, it's certainly, certainly a possibility.
But of course then I think it would be a, a lost opportunity for the village and certainly
for, and all taxes. And certainly for, and all taxing jurisdictions.
Yeah. I guess, and we don't have to beat this one, this school district obviously couldn't speak for itself, but the different taxing jurisdictions have different interests, so.
True, it's true, and that is the case throughout Westchester County, throughout New York State.
Right.
Obviously, whenever pilot is proposed, different taxing jurisdictions have different opinions. It is an opportunity, and that's why I refer to it as a unique opportunity here, but it is an opportunity typically to foster the type of investment in the community, not just from a taxing perspective, but also to bring in, you know, a new population that's looking to continue the vibrancy and the revitalization.
So, I assume that a detailed negotiation, if there is one, about parking and who would pay what, is an executive session item. But in the bigger picture, if you had, say, a 10-year phase-out of a tax abatement in exchange for public availability of some parking, what happens at the 10-year point?
In terms of the parking?
Yes.
Right, I'm assuming we discuss it, but the idea is that it would remain the villages.
Parking is those.
How much, I can hold a certain number of numbers in my head, but how much per parking space would we be abating in taxes in the 10-year period?
Per parking space?
I mean, that's a reasonable way to ask it, right? How much are we paying for each parking space, basically?
Over a 10-year period?
Well, in total, right? So, if we get the spaces free and clear at the end of the 10 years, and you're done with your tax abatement, how much have we paid for each of the spaces in lost?
In the form of lost rent?
In lost rent.
Twice the spaces or four more spaces?
No, in the larger.
Right, right.
Yeah.
It depends on the number of spaces.
So, either, either way, though.
That probably takes a little analysis to be sure you're doing the right thing.
We'll come back to you.
Okay. No, I'm just getting, like, trying to get a rough, you know, if we're paying, you know, $1,000 for parking space, it sounds great, if we're paying $1 million for a parking space, not so great, so.
I mean, either piece of.
As a matter of fact, you're getting paid double, so you're making money off the spaces rather than being a cost.
Yeah, no, I understand.
... taxes now, so you're going to apply the next year, over 20, so you're actually going to pay double the parking taxes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a point of view on it, I'm just, I feel like that's what we need to know.
And one thing, just following up on that, that I think David and I want to express, it's somewhat unusual for us as a development team to reach out preemptively and proactively to the school district. I've handled.
I wouldn't say that.
I've handled many pilot applications, handling currently several pilot applications in other communities, and I don't knock on the school district's door to discuss it or to ask for permission, nor do other municipalities actually do that in many instances. To your village manager's credit, he raised the issue, we're mindful of some of the issues that your school district has had and may have, we want to be respectful of that. Quite frankly, I think that Town of Mount Pleasant IDA has the legal authority to adopt, to induce the project, and I do not believe the school district in and of itself would have a veto power, but obviously, we want to make sure that this is done as cooperative a fashion as possible. The interesting thing is, if you could help me with the numbers, the school district amount, which they're not collecting now, but they're supposed to be collecting now, is approximately X, and even in year one, they would collect Y. Do we know what X and Y are?
It's, um.
No problem.
Well, I have to say.
The reason I'm asking that is because we believe that the school district, even in year one, would be net fiscally positive. We don't suspect that there would be multiple schoolchildren. David's experience in his other buildings, and where, we will share that with you if you decide you want to go forward with this. We have empirical data on how many schoolchildren are in each of these other buildings. There's like seven other buildings with 230, 240 rental apartments, so I'm not just going to come up, make up numbers, I'm going to give you numbers on a community-by-community, building-by-building basis, that I think are fairly reliable indicators of what we could expect. And we also know that no building, no matter how wonderful he is, and no matter how wonderful Phil's product is, it will not lease out instantaneously. There is an absorption period for 73 units. We think year one is fiscally beneficial to the school district. Year two remains fiscally beneficial to the school district. As David explained, in year 11, we're kind of back to regular anyway. So, there's a couple-of-year period of time that we're analyzing, and, Mr. Mayor, you asked the right question, what's in it for the, what's, is, why with the school district? Why is this good for the school district? The question is, why is this good for Pleasantville, as far as I'm concerned? You can, you can break it down any way you wish. We think we're coming in with something that's good for Pleasantville, because Pleasantville deserves, whether it's 26, 30, or 41 parking spaces, proximate to your train station, your restaurants, your wonderful Jacob Burns Center, you deserve it. You have an opportunity, and so, having discussed it with your village officials, we're here to present it.
Okay, so, I think, oh, did you have something to say?
I wanted to ask a question to.
David.
David.
You can just, yeah.
Throw a dart at it.
Based on the number.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could.
Yeah, yeah.
The best way that I would be able to quantify that would be the opportunity cost between building 60 units, which would have a pilot and no parking.
Right.
And then the 73, what the property tax estimate of the property would be, just the 60 unit, as opposed to, it's a smaller development, so.
That's fair.
Right?
Yeah.
It would be a lower tax levy in the end.
Yep.
Then the 73 ultimately would be higher.
Mm-hmm.
So, over a 10-year period, well, what's.
Yeah, it would be fair to include that in the delta, yeah.
The best way that I can think of, what would really cost, as Peter.
No, that's fair, that's fair to include.
You know, would I go for the 60? I mean, yes, thank you. Come on, it's better to do the 73 for everybody.
Okay, so, so, I mean, do you have more to say, or?
No, I mean, that, Mr. Mayor, we're here to open this dialogue, it's important, we'd like to kick off on this project, there's a fair amount of work that has to be done, we need some guidance from you.
Okay, so, can I suggest, first off, I just wanted to throw one thing out, I think it unlikely, regardless of legality, that the Mount Pleasant IDA would proceed with a pilot against the opposition of the village and the school district. I think it's quite unlikely, so, just saying. So, are you in a position to give us a PDF with this stuff, and also give us, David had sent a letter at one point suggesting.
Correct.
Some version of this, but is that, is that still the proposal?
So, we, I think there have been some slight modifications because the unit count changed. We can, we, the answer, Mr. Mayor, is if you, if you're asking, we would be delighted to make a submission to you of the PDF of the plans, a little bit more of an explanatory analysis of the numbers, maybe we'll take a crack at David's question and actually try to see if we can come up with a per parking space approximation and answer that. So, we would love to submit that to you.
That would be great, and I don't think you have to do, obviously, the memo about the numbers needs to be put together, but I don't think you have to do a lot of other work.
Got it.
We're at this early stage here.
Agreed.
So, I mean, just to be clear to folks, just as David said, if it turns out that Robert Hughes, our building inspector, agrees with the applicant that this is an as-of-right use, that does not require variances, then the question is not, can it be built, the question is working through the site plan with the planning commission. The question, so the question, as David already reported, that's presented to us, is, are we interested in adding to this piece additional parking that would then produce more units and a proposed tax abatement? That's not something we've ever done bef, well, I shouldn't say ever. The MLA building was an IDA deal a long time ago, there hasn't been one since, except in some minor ways, exemption from sales tax for construction materials, something like that, so.
We know it's novel, we understand that, and that's why we wanted to come in and talk about it.
So, I appreciate all of that, and if you could get us just a PDF of all this stuff, and then a memo indicating what you're proposing out of the box, I think that gives us a position to give it some further thought.
Great.
Can I, can I ask, oh, sorry. Just a quick follow-up question with regards to the shared parking, so 15% is what is allowed?
25%.
Oh, 25%.
And we had said 15 spaces in this instance, yes.
Okay, I got my.
So.
Because I was going to ask, 25 is already pretty high, I was going to ask if, what the, how far back history-wise that goes, and what the rationale for the percentage is, like, do you have any idea, Robert?
I don't, I have to look to see when that was instituted. My time here, four years, they've instituted one, it's on the new Pizza Building, there was offices above and a restaurant.
Right.
So, they would be operating at a different time.
Right, right.
So, they did implement that on that one.
Yeah.
But we haven't had something of this nature, but there's an zoning code that the per year planning commission never looked at the progress.
And we are, and just if I may interrupt, we are not asking for 25%, understand, what I, just so, in case either I misspoke or it wasn't clear, your code allows up to 25% of the parking to be allocated for shared parking. You have to still prove it up to the planning commission.
Right.
In this instance, our percentages are below that in terms of what we think would work with the 4,500 square feet of commercial. I'm sorry? We're at, we're at about half of that.
12% is what you think would work?
David's saying 12%.
Okay.
If I understood the way you explained that correctly.
Sure, please.
Does that mean that if I were, if I were renting one of your apartments, they're on my lease, it would say, you have two spaces, one of those spaces is available to you all the time, the other space is available to you up till 8:00 in the morning and after 4:00 in the afternoon? Right, so, I was just asking how it actually works.
In terms of the allocation, so typically, that's a level of detail that by no means has anyone fully decided on this. Typically, with a situation like this, you would get allocated in your lease a designated space, so you would.
Oh, and the second is just another floating space?
Exactly, the second would be a floating space, and your parking consultants, and our parking consultants will tell us all, that the undesignated spaces are the ones to allow the sharing to occur in.
Right, I understand.
So, that's my lay explanation of traffic engineering in that regard.
Okay, so, and in the end, some piece of that is germane to the negotiation about parking, if we wanted to do it, but most of that is planning commission issues, so.
Absolutely.
It would be good to have a sense of exactly how many parking spaces we're talking about.
Well, we'll get that in this.
In the report.
Yeah, I mean, we, we know we can generate 26 with no sharing and 41 with sharing, and you should understand, we, we're pretty confident that our shared parking concept makes very good sense. And BFJ, who are pretty cutting-edge planners, would tell you, that is a really good thing to promote in your village, so that we don't pave a parking space for one person that's used for 12 hours a day, and then we pave another parking space right next to it for somebody that's used 12 hours a day, when they're alternating 12 hours.
Yeah, we sort of do that already in our municipal law.
Yeah, so, for those of us that do this on the front line, we're doing everything we can these days to try to take a look at pavement, and try to take a look at impervious surface area, and I said it earlier, and again, it's an issue for later on, but your 1.51 parking space ratio is, is by no means as green as other communities, so.
Right. Really quick, before I lose the floor. Timeline?
We're hoping that we can pick up a building permit tomorrow.
No, I guess, I mean more in terms of how long do you think from, from go remediation takes, the building process takes, what are you looking at?
Well, the first thing is, is the approval process.
The approval of edge, yeah.
Which obviously is going to take some period of time under SECRE. The full, the build-out, so approximately?
Do you want to know how long it takes to build it?
To build it?
15, 18? Not more than 15 months, once I close ground.
Right. Including excavation and remediation.
Yes.
So, 15, so approximately a 15-month build-out period, and your typical absorption for 73 units?
Around here, around 65, 60.
And then, does the brownfield program play a role in the timing of all this?
That's just a, that's just a reimbursement mechanism, really.
All right, so it doesn't have any approval or any sort of?
While we were in front of your planning commission, our remedial action work plan, RAWP, would be reviewed and approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we've said enough, I appreciate your candor, and if you could get us that stuff, we'll give it some consideration, and I think likely circle around a little bit with some of our colleagues on the other taxing entities as well, just to understand the lay of land.
Understood. I gather we should just interface with Eric on that.
Yeah.
And if you all would like us to come back for a discussion or answer further questions, you'll let us know.
We will.
We would like to kick off as soon as possible.
Understood.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time and your patience, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the public hearing on the charitable gift reserve tax fund credit.
We'll be out in the hallway, we'll pop back in.
Yeah. All right, since we have an evening ahead of us, is there, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, is there a motion to open the public hearing on an introductory local law number two of 2018 to add Article 10 charitable gift reserve fund tax credit to Village Code Chapter 166 taxation? So, moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the exciting public hearing on this subject. So, we've talked about this in the past, you perhaps have read about it in the press, the short version of a long tortured and rather unclear story is that after Congress limited the deductibility of state and local taxes to $10,000, the state of New York sought to mitigate the impact of that by creating a scenario where folks could make a charitable contribution to a taxing entity, and that charitable contribution would become an offset to your taxes at the maximum rate of 95%. So, the hypothetical would be that if you owed $10 in taxes to the village of Pleasantville, you could come and make a contribution of $9.50, you would be given a voucher that said you made a contribution of $9.50, and when it came time to pay your taxes, you would deliver 50 cents on that voucher. So, there are a bunch of complicated aspects to it, including the fact that this would have to happen at each of the taxing entities, and further, for most people who have a mortgage with a escrow, making that happen seems fantastically complicated, but I can tell you, I've been to a couple of sessions on this, including a session at the county center, where there was a presentation by folks from the governor's office, and among the many aspects of this that are complicated is the question of whether it's actually legal and whether the IRS would approve it in the end. About three, four weeks ago, the IRS issued a statement that said they will be issuing a statement, and so far, no statement has arrived. But they did put a context on that statement, right? I mean, they did signal that, they reminded everybody that federal law governs how this sort of thing would be handled on their end, so they said they were going to be giving us a statement, but they did put a spin on it, just to be clear. Probably true. Yes. The state continues to say that if the IRS rejects it, they will challenge it in court, and they believe that they will win, but one significant piece is that the state provided a form, RP 980A ACC, acknowledgement of charitable contribution, that says, I hereby acknowledge receipt of a charitable contribution to the fund in the amount of X from X, donor's name who resides at X, and then the signature of the fund administrator or the agent, in other words, somebody who works for the village of Pleasantville, or for any village, community participating, is, you sign this thing and verify that no goods or services were provided in exchange for this donation. So, that feels a little bit head spinning, since a person is going to come back with this very same form and say, I don't pay my taxes because I already paid them, and clearly services are delivered for that, and so, I can tell you that in the context of the meeting that was held at the county center, there were more than a few tax receivers who said, I will not sign that. So, at any rate, amid all of that, we were wanting to proceed with this in the hopes that there might be some more information provided, and in the hopes that the IRS might, might provide its comments, in the hopes that clarity would come from the state, because we would have to act tonight in order for the first half of village taxes to qualify under this. Towns are on a different tax payment schedule, and they're in a somewhat different circumstance, likewise for school districts. But I can say, and I'm speaking purely for myself, it is a muddy, unclear story with a number of things that, at least at the moment, feel to me disqualifying. So, again, that is purely me speaking, and it, I'm first in line to try to help village residents have some sort of tax benefit if they can have it, but I personally can't see us jumping into this now, under these circumstances with so much unclarity, recognizing that if we started it and did start accepting. with so much unclarity, recognizing that if we started it and did start accepting these things, and the program was disqualified and no longer tax deductible, that creates a new problem for a taxpayer, because suddenly, they haven't paid their taxes. And they are now eligible for fines for non-payment of taxes. And further, because it was a charitable contribution, no one has an obligation to give it back.
Right.
Obviously, we would if there's a legal way to do it, but all of these matters are complicating factors. So, any other comments on that?
Sure, I have a bunch to say, but do you want to see if anyone?
Well, why don't the board comment, and then folks can comment.
I mean, I do a little bit of this stuff in my day job, and one of the things that's an overriding principle when you're dealing with the taxing authorities is that they look primarily at the function or the intent behind a transaction and not the form in which it's structured. So in many, many other instances on Wall Street, there have been lots and lots and lots of efforts, a lot of legal bills and a lot of accounting bills thrown at trying to devise complicated structures around tax law. Most of the time, they fall into the IRS wasn't born yesterday camp. And there's a lot of talk right now amongst the folks that I deal with professionally, that this will ultimately be determined to be much the same thing. Whether the state of New York and California has also tried to do something like this, New Jersey is looking at doing something like this, all of the high-property tax states are trying to find a way to use this kind of mechanism. And then, New York has another one with the employment tax credit, which is even more complicated than this one is.
But that doesn't involve us.
That doesn't involve us, right. But the end of the day, the IRS can disallow this, and the people that have availed themselves of it will then have a false tax return, and they will need to amend that tax return. And, as Peter mentioned, they will have underpaid their taxes, because they will have claimed a deduction that would then be disallowed, which raises all sorts of issues with taxes and penalties and all that, so.
And further, they will be subject to penalties locally, because suddenly, the tax payment that we recorded has been rendered invalid.
So, right at the surface of it, I personally, again, I'm only speaking for myself, I'm skeptical that this will actually survive, at least the initial couple rounds. New York may sue and try to get this put through. There's lots of states that allow some sort of tax credit for charitable deductions, not quite in this context, but they are out there, and I think that'll be the grounds on which the states try to ram it through. This is just the beginning of it. There is tremendous clarity that will be coming, probably through litigation down the road. But for us in the village, this presents a tremendous logistical hurdle, an administrative hurdle, that's still trying to actually work its way out, and how would we handle certain things. So personally, for me, I'm not a fan of intentionally going into something where not even the question of unintended consequences are here, but this will have unintended consequences, and we don't know enough about how any of this will work. We don't even know if it will work, period, on the face. But even if it did get allowed, how we would logistically process it. For me personally, it's too early to open up a line that could actually have some damaging consequences down the road.
Let me throw out one other thing there. I'm one of the officers of the Westchester Municipal Officials Association, and we've scheduled a meeting with County Executive George Latimer, and I think also the County Attorney, Pleasantville's own John Nona, next week to talk about this as well. The lay of the land for the county is somewhat different from the situation for villages and towns for a variety of reasons. And I'll know more about that next week. If there's any further comment from the board, then we can ask if there's any comment from the public, either folks who are here or folks who would call in at 769-1677. If you got that right.
And we would, sorry.
No, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I cannot speak as eloquently on this subject. I don't think as Steve can. But I would love to hear from the public. I would, in spite of the elaborate rationales, yeah, exactly, that have been offered, and I don't disagree with anything that's been said here, but I find this situation extremely frustrating, because it's clear that some sort of, to me, that New York is one of the states that's been targeted by the federal government, and in spite of the fact that we contribute disproportionately to the federal budget. And so, you know, on that level, I find this situation extremely frustrating, and yet, it's clear that logistically, we're dealing with layers of complication. But I would encourage one of you or any of you to come.
It's very, it's a frustrating situation, but it sounds like right now it's too.
Can you come to the mic?
We would, if there was a way for us, we would all want to do this.
But it does, it seems like it's gonna push more people out of the state.
You gotta report your address.
Allison Layden.
Name an address.
Allison Layden, 44 Summit Place.
Awesome.
I think it will definitely push people out of the state, because I think it's gonna make it unaffordable for a lot of people. You always have those deductions.
That's the fear, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. But it feels like it's a little early to be doing it, as sad as that is.
Exactly. If there was a way for us to put this together quickly enough where we could help people, we're in the same boat. We live here, right?
Right.
I'm just terrified.
Absolutely.
Now, just to play devil's advocate, the other half of it says that these states are home to extremely wealthy people who are able to shelter a tremendous amount of income through their properties. You know, most of the country's states don't have to have this conversation, because very few people are paying $10,000 or more in real estate taxes. So the other flip side of it is that these jurisdictions also happen to be politically somewhat against the current administration. So that plays a role in all of this as well, not our topic for tonight. But I think, for me, if there was a way to see through building this now and seeing what would happen, I would be in favor of it. I would want to do it. What I get nervous about is we create this pathway, people do it, and what we've done is basically dangle something and let them get driven into the path of ruin, so to speak, right?
Oh, it's true. It's true. I mean, it's really, it sounds like there's not really an option at this time.
Not yet.
That's my sense.
My sense, not yet. Maybe in three months.
It's unfair, it is, yeah.
You know, we get clarity from the IRS, we get more, ideally, other people get this litigated, not us, and then we can see how it works, and we can pass it perhaps then. But for me, it's too early.
And in our particular situation, because the first half of village taxes are being collected now.
Thank you for your comment.
It's not the biggest piece of change that's in play. But I can say that, to the extent that I've talked to school districts, they are all very cautious as well, so. Albany is all gung ho about it, and I would love to think they're right, and maybe they are, but there are a bunch of questions they just can't answer, so. All right, any further comment of any sort? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have escaped the public hearing. Okay.
So, just curious, what happens to this?
We can table it, or we can vote it down.
What the resolutions, we should pull them.
I think we should pull them.
Yeah, Judge Seibert from Keenan Bean, I should say, number one advised against moving forward with it at this time.
Okay, so we'll simply pull those.
But, yeah, he also said, "Don't pass it until the board is ready."
Right.
Okay.
Good, okay.
All right, Nicole already had one, so start with Steve, 140.
Okay. Wait a minute, I gotta get the, all right. Well, this is, resolve that the following budget amendments are hereby approved as listed below. From the general fund, $21,327 from unallocated insurance to law contractual, $634 from unallocated insurance to engineer contractual, $1,587 from garage vehicle repair to village hall fuel, $8,306 from garage, these are all gonna, the next several are gonna be from garage vehicle repair to village hall repairs, $5,476 to village hall elevator, $6,380 to village hall outside services, $7,937 to village hall cleaning, and then $4,248 from contingent to village hall PASNY, $2,0167 from ordinance update expense to legal notices, $2,000 from police conferences and training to police overtime, $6,040 from police computer services to police overtime, $6,693 from the Clinton Street Center part-time to rec admin full-time, $22,737 from contingent to Panther Club part-time, and $3,0349 from contingent to Panther Club outside services. Then, from the water fund, we're gonna take $4,060 from contingent to water transmission overtime, and from the refuse fund, $825 from contingent to refuse full-time. And we're appropriating from the general fund, $1,000, sorry.
I wish it were one thousand.
Yeah, me too. $136,113 from judgments and claims to tax certiorates, and then $38,869 from pool repairs and maintenance to a blank. So I wanted to ask actually where that should be.
Two pools, repairs and maintenance from the general fund.
Right, right. It's coming out of fund balance.
I'm sorry, coming from, but I don't have anything. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 it's for, I'm sorry.
I guess it was still.
It's the suit of heaven.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
So the vast majority of those are cleanup balancing entries for the fiscal year of the end of May 31?
Correct.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. David, 141.
Resolve that the pre-check register dated June 25, 2018, covering check numbers 89972 and 90063 to 90113 is hereby approved as listed below. General fund, $199,825.95. Special purpose, $1,100. Water fund, $127,183.16. Capital fund, $16,498.01. Refuse fund, $1,396.10. Trust fund, $2,250.50, for a total of $348,253.72.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the check register?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nicole, 142.
Resolve that the pre-check register dated June 25, 2018, covering check numbers 89970 to 89971 and 89973 to 90062 is hereby approved as listed below. General fund, $258,423.72. Water fund, $36,608.65. Capital fund, $1,440. Refuse fund, $22,035.76, for a total of $318,508.13.
Is there a second?
Second.
So these are for the current fiscal year, ending 2019?
Correct.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 143, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to execute a revocable license agreement with DP 17 LLC, 333 North Bedford Road, Suite 145 in Mount Kisco, to permit the continued installment of concrete curves, delineate parking areas, and maintain site conditions with regards to the commercial property located at 141 Tompkins Avenue.
Is there a second? So this is a renewal of a now-expired agreement that was established in 2006?
Yep.
The dominant properties building.
It just expired in '16. It was a 10-year. The original was '06.
Right.
Valid 10 years. Recently realized that it expired.
Yeah.
It's not a successful arrangement.
Right?
What was that?
It's been a successful arrangement.
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Okay, any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 144, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the certificate of acknowledgement associated with the land use permit application filed with the New York City Department of Environmental Protection in order for the village to install a water main on New York City-owned property.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is part of our?
Water main project.
Water main project.
Yep. Where is this? Over by the aqueduct?
Yeah, some of the piping will run over to that property. We have, I think, four different connections over there that run through their property that we pay annually permit fees on.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 145, Nicole.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville is considering amending village alarm code to include fire alarms and billing for false fire alarms, now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing on Monday, July 9, 2018, at 8:00 p.m. in the second-floor meeting room of Village Hall located at 80 Wheeler Avenue to consider local law introductory number three of 2018 to authorize amendment to alarm billing.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this arises in an effort to create some financial penalties for folks who have fire alarms, because our volunteer fire department gets up in the middle of the night in response to an awful lot of them, including some that are repeat offenders.
Yes.
Mostly repeat.
Very good to have, I think.
All right, so, public hearing on Monday, July 9. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 146.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville is considering the enactment of a new village code to require fees to be charged for reusable bags and an eventual ban on plastic bags for certain businesses and purposes located within the village, now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby schedules a public hearing on Monday, July 9, 2018, at 8:00 p.m. in the second-floor meeting room of Village Hall at 80 Wheeler Avenue to consider local law introductory number four of 2018 to authorize amendment, wait, to an alarm billing.
Yeah, that's a mistake there.
That's a double. To enact local law, to enact a reusable bag initiative.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
I was like.
As reflected in the record.
Yes.
Right.
As amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So the draft local law is attached to this.
Right.
Eric, a couple of folks have commented to me that they're struggling a little with the new NOVAS system.
Okay.
Especially noticing or finding attachments. Does NOVAS have a sort of a one-pager that is the customer's guide to?
Is it the public through the website, or through the?
Yeah, well, part of it is, and we definitely, we don't need to discuss this now, but we need to rearrange the website, because people go to agendas, agenda says, "Go to NOVAS." You go to NOVAS, and then you got a whole lot of stuff to sift through in order to get to what you want.
Yeah, it's hard.
You'll have to talk about it later.
Yeah, another time, so.
Can we post this as a straight link?
Absolutely. Yeah, because it's a high-profile item.
Yeah, we should have that.
I would encourage the public to sign up for the email blasts, because embedded in that are the links, which have the hyperlinks for easy viewing of attachments.
That's great, good point.
Because I download that from the Agenda Public link site, so, sign up for the email blast, and then that, those attachments will be easy to read.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. You know, it might be worth, obviously, the folks that would get this email blast have already signed up. It might be worth sending out an email blast, making exactly that point, and saying, "We know you've signed up, but can you forward this to friends and relatives?"
I could put it on the Facebook page, too, and I could also put a blurb about the email blast. Might be a good idea.
But try those links. Sometimes it's designed to go straight there, and it'll take you to the.
Right. All right, public hearing on the bag law, Monday, July 9. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion approved. 147, David, I guess, right?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with the settlement of the certiorary petition by Bank of Mellon as designated on the official tax map as Section 99.15, Block 1, Lot 4, as follows. One Campus Drive, total refunds from 2014 to 2017 of $2,991.65. And further resolve that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refunds in the amount of $2,991.65 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
This is a matter we discussed in executive session last week with advice of counsel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion approved. 148.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with the settlement of certiorary petition by Generation 3 Properties LLC as designated on the official tax map as Section 106.6, Block 5, Lot 4, as follows. For 460 Bedford Road, a total refund for the year 2014.
That last number should be 2018.
It should be 2018, 2018. A total refund of $18,116.99. And further resolve that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refunds in the amount of $18,116.99 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that last line should be 2018, right? So that's reflected in the record. Likewise, a matter we discussed in executive session with advice of counsel. All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 149, Steve.
This is a good one. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the donation from Will Promisell of $2,410 through his Eagle Scout project fundraising efforts to support the village installation of AEDs in village parks.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that's the matter we started our evening with tonight. Eagle Scout candidate Will Promisell has just done a great job, and we will now have AEDs, defibrillators, in each of the three major parks.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion approved. 150, David.
I think we approved one.
No, this is a different one, a different person.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, based on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Public Works, hereby appoints Aldo Conte to the job title laborer, job code 0425, CSEA Wage Schedule B. Wage Schedule B, group laborer, non-CDL road maintenance, Step 1, effective July 2, 2018, at a salary of $54,850. Said appointment is subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks to a max maximum of 52 weeks, and carries the requirement of obtaining a commercial driver's license within one year of employment."
Is there a second?
Second.
Replacing an empty slot, welcome Aldo to the team. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 151, Nicole.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees recognizes the attainment of a commercial driver's license and one year of employment, hereby approves the increase in salary for labor Leonard Balducci Jr. from CSEA Wage Schedule B, group laborer, non-CDL road maintenance, Step 2, to CSEA Wage Schedule B, group laborer, CDL, road maintenance sanitation, Step 1, at a salary of $57,924, effective retroactively to June 5, 2018, per hiring contract."
Is there a second?
Second.
Congratulations, Glenn.
This is great.
As long as we knew he would. Reminds one what an alphabet soup job titles are in the civil service system. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 152, minutes. Steve.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meetings held on June 11, 2018."
Is there a second?